Hello.
I think that somehow the wrong, bad link got in the agenda.
Oh, what link did you, what linker is in the agenda?
I copied it from a different agenda, planning board agenda, but maybe it was a. Maybe I accidentally copied one where we joined the select board or something. I don't know. I just updated it, but Michael got in. I don't know.
It, it should be, it should be the same one that's been, I mean, I haven't changed the set meetings in the Zoom account. I use clerk account. So the one that ends in three, two, three is always the planning board.
No, I understood. I, uh. You know, that's why I copied it from a prior meeting.
The updated one worked.
Okay, yeah. That's not good.
I'm gonna go on mute so I can keep crunching.
Okay.
So I will note that in the, in the past, when there have been issues with. Zoom links for, not for the planning board, but for other committees. We have been told that because it's not part of the agenda, there isn't a 48 hour notice issue with open meeting law. But I, you know, obviously anybody who's trying to get in if they're using the previous one. He's gonna have trouble unless they go back to the page now.
Yeah, no, I mean, I updated it and I just emailed everyone, but obviously it's a. It's not ideal to have that. It's a. Yeah, but it's. What I'm gonna do is I've set up a recurring meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting rather, and. I'll put, I'll make, you know, put the Zoom info on that.
When you say a recurring meeting, do you mean in, in Zoom or in?
In my town government, in my town government website.
Yeah, okay. Yep. It looks like folks are joining now.
Yeah, yeah. We should make this a really long meeting because it's Ashley's last one before she cares about time.
I'm coming, I'm coming off a week of camping right now. And I just had my first good shower in six days. Pretty awesome. Sorry.
Ashley, where were you?
I'm not far. Mohawk Trail State Forest.
Whoa.
It was really good. Yeah, with some friends.
I've never stayed there.
It's really lovely. You, if you book three months in advance, you can get right on the river and. I was there with some friends and Phineas popped in a little bit as well. It's good. Nice to be by the river.
The cold river.
The cold river. Yeah, it was not that cold. It definitely, we camped there, I've camped there like every year with this group and. It was really warm this year. I was laying in it like every day.
Yeah, I just went a few weeks, a month ago now and, yeah, it was great.
You camped there?
Yeah, I was talking about, I believe at the opening of last meeting. Um, so it's a. Yeah, it's been good.
Good. Yep, almost over summer.
Yeah, yeah.
I bet you're happy. Are you happy? Does, does that mean that you got more freedom because your kids, well, your youngest one isn't at school yet, right?
Yeah, but they're, they'll be in preschool. So, yeah, I mean, it'll be good. You know, having the additional routine is a good thing. All right, it's seven oh five and we've got a quorum, so I'm gonna call this. Meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board to order for. August 11th, 2025. I'll note that the meeting is being recorded. And I'll move on to our. Well, I'll just note, we have President Michael De Quiera, myself, Nathan Murphy, Ashley Pycroft. Steve Bressler, Keith Hasty, and Lanius Kirk, Matel Pungal. Absent would be Deacon Bonner, Jeff Weston. And. Our associate member time Sefer. All right, would anyone like to make public comment? Hearing and seeing none. Item on the agenda is. Landowner education and guidance. Do we have anything for that? Hearing and seeing none. Move right along here. We have on the agenda, review and improvements for seven fourteen, twenty twenty five, six nine, twenty twenty five, five thirteen, twenty twenty four. And four eight, twenty twenty four. Do, uh. Do we have a. Motion to.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the minutes of July fourteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
All right, Michael De Quiera has moved. He faces a second to. I will also note that Jeff Weston has joined the meeting. Welcome, Jeff.
Thanks. I had a hard time logging in. Thanks.
Yeah, that's my fault. I, uh. It was a, a bad link in there somehow and we fixed it, but. And that's a, make sure that doesn't happen again. Now, right now, Jeff, just to catch you up, we are, we, Michael has moved and Keith has seconded that we approve the. Draft minutes from seven fourteen, twenty twenty five. And. So we'll take a look at those. A discussion. I know I had a few items on this one.
I got one thing.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if it matters or not, but I. On page nine. Um. We were talking about what kinds of things we would suggest to be on the state. Bylaws that the commission, I can't remember the person's name who was here with us, was inquiring about. And. Um, I said some things, I said, you know, we would like it if. Uh, they weren't greater than 15 acres and if there was the four to one and all of that. And then. It says that I said that they should not be located on sloped land and. Maybe I said that and if I did, that's fine, but I. That's not, like, my spirit isn't that. It's more. I don't remember the exact specifications, like what percent slope we have said you can't build on in our bylaws. And maybe I should have said that, but I don't know. It's interesting because I said that. And I don't know, and when we discuss these minutes, can we go back and say, but that's not what I meant, what I meant was, or do we just leave it?
It sort of depends.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
Cut this up is not a big deal and say, it's fine, but I. I don't think that they should never be located on sloped land. Just, I like our specifications.
Mateo, do you want to chime in? Do you have a sense? Because you wrote them up, right?
I'm, second, let me look up here. Writing these minutes based off of the recording, so I don't know. Um, you know, if you want to table these to another meeting, so Ashley can review the recording and decide or, you know.
Here's what I would suggest.
Whatever, whatever revision the, the board wants to make, I'll make the revision. I make the.
Here's what I would suggest unless we have objection, but I think you could. Add in a little. Like in parentheses after that sentence, you know. Consider it in the context of existing. Parameters for limits on the slope of land. Four to one land. And. We have four to one land preservation and. Slope land, you know, are taken in the context of existing provisions and the zoning Bible. If that, if everyone's okay with that, that kind of gives a little bit of leeway to say, you know, there's something already there. She's not saying, you know, it's not like a. Undefying slope. You can reference the Bible, right?
That's what I was trying to say. So thank you.
Sorry, shame that I did. That solar sites only be located on sloped land under existing provisions in the existing bylaw.
I would say, no, I would say after the sentence, you know, put in parentheses, you know, the. You know, the comments in the, you know, preceding sentence pertaining to a four to one land preservation ratio. And slope land are in the context of existing provisions of the. Of the solar bylaw. And you can reference the section if you want, but yeah. That just says that, you know, it's kind of like, you know. Yeah, to. Yeah. It's almost like putting in brackets, right? You know, to fill in the blanks of a quote. If something's left out. Brackets aren't part of the quote, but it helps to add context. Any, any other changes from anyone else? I've got a couple, so I'm gonna say. Uh, one, I know, landowner, I put on the. You know, automatic agenda is two words. That's another thing I should fix, right? Landowner is one word. So if we could fix that, that would be good. The other thing, another one is, a lot of these motions had extensions. And. In the minutes, it says motion approved unanimously with one extension. But, and people can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I don't think it's considered unanimous, passing unanimously if there's an abstention.
So this is, this is something that I, I have actually researched in the context of the C P C and that. Under Robert's Rules of Orders, it is unanimous if there's an abstention because the. The qualification of unanimous refers to the number of people who are voting. Abstention is not voting for or against. It is not voting. So unanimity refers to those who are present and voting, casting a vote, and abstention is not a vote. It's a refusal to vote. That, that's why I tried to word it the way I did. I understand your concern about it though, because it does create, it creates.
Yeah, no, I am not, uh, you're throwing the book at me, Mateo.
Sorry. This came up with the C P C a couple of years ago. That's the only reason I know.
I know, I recently, what's that?
I just love it. It's one of these wonky things. It's just sort of fun.
It frustrated me on the C P C because it did create the impression, it, and I understand completely what you're saying, but I wanted to try to word it in a way that was clear.
Well, no, you know, that's, that's, that's why, you know, I, um. I don't know enough to kind of preface it to say, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong. So it's, you learn something new every day. That's good. I recently did. You know, receive a copy of Robert's Rules of Order. I have yet to read it.
It's very exciting. It's really, it's quite the read.
I, I believe it. I can't wait to just, you know, dig in. Okay, so I guess we can skip that one. Thank you, Mateo, for having that. That response ready to prevent us from. You know, doing the wrong thing, you know? Um. Okay, so, um. Page seven of nine on the, in the second paragraph. I would just like to change would to could. And we can further tweak it. So the paragraph starts, Murphy notes that under light industry. Uh, data center. Would or could be allowed by special permit and roadside residential and forest conservation zones. But not in the town center or Lake Wyomel zones. The board can also regulate using the conditions, blah, 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 right? So. Now, obviously, light industrial use is allowed in. Roadside residential and. Forest conservation, right? That's not a would or could thing, but the. You know, I wanted it to say could instead of would because, you know, we haven't really determined whether or not. Under our current bylaw, data center would even be allowed or meets the definition given for light industrial use, right? So it's like in the, in the actual reporting, I say, in theory, this would be, you know, allowed under. Light industry, right? So I just want to make it, you know. Could instead of would, if that's, all right. And I think that's it. You know, there was some other minor grammatical things, but I think, you know, I didn't get it in. And I, well, I don't want to go through all those now. I think it's nothing that we can't live with, so. Unless anyone else has, has anything else, I'll call the roll. And Mateo, you're good with that change?
Yep, I just made those changes now.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, um, I'll call the roll. Weston. Hasty.
Hi.
Um, Bressler. That looks like an I. Okay. Um, Pycroft.
Aye.
Yeah, and De Quiera.
Aye.
And I'll, I'm an I. So the. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is a.
I'll move to approve the minutes of June ninth, two thousand twenty five.
All right, excellent. Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Take care, moves, less than seconds. We've proved the minutes of June ninth, twenty twenty five. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll. Call the roll. Weston.
Aye.
Hasty.
Aye.
Um, Bressler.
Aye.
Pycroft.
Aye.
De Quiera.
Aye.
And. Right. Next up, so that, you know, the board. You have to approve unanimously approves the minutes from June ninth, twenty twenty five.
I'll move to approve the minutes of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty four.
All right. Here a second.
Second.
Okay, De Quiera moves, Hasty seconds to approve the minutes from. May thirteenth, two thousand twenty four. Any discussion? Okay, hearing and saying none, I'll call the roll. Weston.
Aye.
Hasty.
Aye.
Bressler.
Aye.
Pycroft.
Aye.
De Quiera.
Aye.
And I'm an I. So the motion passes, carries unanimously to approve the minutes from May thirteenth, two thousand twenty four.
I'll move to approve the minutes of April eighth, two thousand twenty four.
Second.
Hey. Take your moves, Hasty seconds, approve minutes from April eighth, two thousand twenty four. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Weston.
Aye.
Hasty.
Upstaying.
Bressler.
Aye.
Pycroft.
Aye.
De Quiera.
Aye.
And I also abstain. So motion carries with four votes in the affirmative and two extensions. I'll say it carries unanimously. And that concludes our agenda item for approving minutes. Yeah, the board approved. April eighth, two thousand twenty four there.
We caught up now?
No, but I was just gonna say that. Draft minutes for approval. We've got, there are three left in there. I did submit the minutes from July eighth, twenty twenty four that we approved, and I just had buried in my documents. I finally, you know. I'm up to speed here. I have a. You know, a computer that I can use that doesn't take an hour just to open Word, so I can actually get stuff done now. It's good. It's gonna be huge. I, uh. I do still have two sets of minutes that are from two thousand twenty three, I believe. I have to go and look at the video. I think I was, I was running it and Carrie's absence. I think Carrie had submitted drafts, but then had, had left at the time. And. So there were some revisions and whether or not I actually made them or not at the time and then. So anyway, I've got two, two additional sets that I can dig up and find. And then that leaves just the three that Mateo's got on here. There's gonna be a bunch of other meetings that do not have minutes. The, you know, the majority of those will be. Meetings that were called. Probably exclusively for purposes of going into executive session. And I think, you know, we can probably. Ask, you know, give Mateo the list and ask him to just kind of. Get the open session item of, you know, who was in attendance and the roll call for entering into executive session. And get all that on the books. That'll be kind of quick and we can hopefully. You know, blast through those two, but for now, we'll consider the. you know, blast through those two, but for now, we'll consider the remaining three minutes um, from twenty twenty-four, which will be January, February, and March, twenty twenty-four, to be on our next agenda, and then we'll pretty much be caught up, right? So. Mateo, it's good to have you, sir. And it's good to have you. Item is, uh, discuss request from the broadband MLP board. Has anyone, uh, reviewed that request?
I checked it out. Seems like some math is required.
Yeah, well, you know, um, eh, did anyone else, uh, get a chance to look at it, or? Yeah, I looked at it, um. Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward for somebody. Doesn't the, uh, tax assessor have a good G I S that has, um, they, they could put together a table of lots that are available? Like buildable roadside lots? That have houses and don't have houses? I would imagine they would be able to, uh, probably do a little bit more than we could. Yeah, and then, uh, I think it would be pretty easy to call the, or maybe we have it in, in the town files of the number of building permits that get filed each year to build, you know, what's the trend been in new houses, you know, over the last five years, say? That's up, that's up at Furcog. Yeah. And, um, I know, at least, at, at some point, I had access to look at that, um. Which had been, I think, arranged via the town administrator, I don't know, does anyone else have access to look in the, uh, uh, permits issued for our town?
I think the one, the one thing, in addition to what everyone else said, Gail had asked about, um, lots that had high, medium, and low end potentials, you know, so I'm assuming that.
I mean. And low what?
Yeah, so, you know, part of the reason we ended up having town-owned mini fiber, besides the fact that we wanted fiber, is we were committed to a hundred percent coverage for anyone in town. And so, if you're right on the road, I would assume that it's sort of, um, high potential, you know, that someone, there's a higher potential, someone might move in, and therefore it's an easy, easier connect, um, to, to end run the, the fiber, but, you know, if you're up a dirt road, it's probably, I don't know, I'm assuming it's lower potential in the sense that someone's gonna build a house, it's on a lot, but it's, you know, way back. Um, that's my, I haven't talked to her, that's my interpretation of what she meant when she said, um, she says, I'm, I'm thinking this would mean looking at available frontage and acreage in each of our service areas, which they're four, and coming up with a high, medium, and low end potentials, so that's how I interpreted it, but.
Oh, yeah, she's just talking about the, uh, you know, as far as an estimate of a rate of growth for a given sector, you know, what's the, you know, high, medium, and low estimate?
Oh, so like, there'd be, okay, so like, there might be three in Lakewell versus a high of ten? Kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, low would be three, me, median might be, you know, five, and high might be ten.
Got it, okay, I misunderstood.
That's, that's gonna be some pure conjecture, I think, on our part. Oh, yeah, yeah, so, all right, so I, I, I got on the phone with you and talked to her for a few minutes. I indicated more or less what we just said, right, you can look at, you know, you can, I did suggest that she reach out to the assessor's office and see if they can um, provide some of that data that would be used to derive a, a baseline calculation of, of available buildable lots, looking at existing lots that are undeveloped and determining how many legal lots could be, you know, result from those lots, look at developed lots, and see, you know, are there any of those lots that have additional frontage that could be sold off? And then I got to explain, and we also have this new, uh, you know, the Affordable, uh, Housing Act, where now anyone can add an A D U, which would, uh, you know, result in a, a new, uh, separate broadband account in most cases. Uh, Gail said that their regular, you know, their, uh, their rule is that it has to be separate, but that obviously some people, you know, don't follow the rule, right, so like, if you have, uh, an existing apartment, when broadband came to town, you might, you know, maybe it's, yeah, it's actually your in-laws in the in-law apartment, and you just give them your Wi-Fi password, and you don't get set up with a whole second, um, uh, account, right, but, and, and the best, and, and I don't think our bylaw that we put in calls out, uh, internet access specifically, does it, do you know? It's more like utilities broadly, and specifically electricity. But I don't know about, uh, internet.
No, we, we didn't talk about internet at all.
Which.
Or, or phone line, I mean.
Why's the phone line?
There's another variable to consider, you know, when you think about open space design and flexible frontage. Oh, I, I talked about that too, Steve, um, I appreciate your, you know, thinking, um, but yeah, yeah, I, I also indicated, yeah, your open space design and even possibly subdivisions, right? Right. So, yeah, there's a huge, uh, amount of variability as to what the possibilities are, you know, whether, you know, all of that stuff is, uh, much less likely to happen, right, you know, we're probably not gonna get a big subdivision in Chutesbury. But we don't, you know, there's a lot that could happen, right, that we, you know, if there was, uh, some kind of massive deflation event, event that caused, uh, housing materials to all of a sudden be ex- extremely cheap, that could change things, you know, I, I don't expect that to happen, um, I'm, I'm trying to come out, come up with a scenario that, uh, but, you know, so to the, to the point, um, you know, I, I basically said, you know, try the assessor, see what you can do there, um. And also look at, you know, the trend, you know, you can look at that, and, uh, I said, if we have anything, anyone on the board has anything additional to suggest that I would get back to her with that, which I think, you know, we have it covered, I can maybe summarize it in writing and, and, and send her a message back and, uh, copy everyone, basically saying what we said, that you have, you know, your avail, you know, current available lots, potential lots through A N R, uh, eight, potential A D Us, potential, uh, that's the one, Article Five, open space design, and then, uh, potential subdivisions, right, so there's all those variabilities I can go into, and, yeah, and the, you know, protective use A D Us. Um, okay.
And, and I just said, it's, it's worth, I don't have the facts for this, but I think in terms of external um, pressures, you know, my sense, at least in Western Masses, you know, inflow was post-nine eleven and during the pandemic, you know, so if you had an episodic thing like that, you wouldn't see it immediately, but that's where the pressures come from externally. So, you know, but no one can predict that.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, I, I was surprised to hear that, you know, like, you know, I think in her email, she, she kind of claims that, uh, the rate of development had really been higher than expected. And I mean, I know there's a few, you know, houses that have gone up, you know, there was like the Habitat for Humanity House on West Palm, and you know, there's a couple lots right by me here on West Palm that are, you know, where they've got, you know, two new houses right there, in the, uh, Weaver Estate, I believe. But it didn't seem like anything more than normal, but I haven't been here that long, um. Honestly, the, the best I think they can come up with is a range that has no more accuracy than about a fifty percent window of error. Yeah. Which is pretty large. Yeah, I think they'll, uh, yeah, they're, they're I have, hmm, it's kind of like out of our hands, right, to, you know, what's, what's the cost, and, you know, I mean, obviously you want to have, it's fair to have it and not need it to, than to need it and not have it, right, we don't want to have new houses going up in Chutesbury and I have available broadband connections, right, but, that's, uh, that's up for them, we, we wish them best of luck, and we'll support them if, uh, there's anything else we can do, right? Um, there's not, yeah, there's not much this board does with, in respect to that kind of work. Next on our agenda is, uh, to discuss the town and house communication to include appeal for associate member update community on P B business. Now, I, uh, I have made a little bit of an outline here for what I would put in that communication, I haven't drafted a whole communication yet, um. So what I would like to include is to, uh, recall our achievements of, uh, the prior year, which is, you know, the A D U bylaw, you know, cleaning up, uh, the bylaw by removing the rate of development and, uh, you know, calling out tiny houses, which is, uh, you know, i- it's not, um, yeah, and, you know, just making sure that it's, uh, that there's awareness that, you know, tiny houses can be built in town. Also, and for, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-six initiatives, uh, we're gonna be reviewing possible amendments for, uh, data centers, um. And I would speak to, there's concerns over, you know, energy use, water use, noise, diesel generation, land use, um, et cetera. And also the possibility for, uh, revenue in town. And, uh, I would also include, looking forward, you know, the possibility for the board to revisit affordable housing, possibly looking at, um, allowing manufactured housing. Um, oh, note, my election is, uh, chair for a third term. And then, um, segue into an appeal for volunteers, both, uh, broadly, um, in town. Trying to, you know, speak to, uh, the need for the next generation to step up to the plate. And also, uh, specifically call out our open seat for an associate member. So does anyone have any, uh, any part of that they're particularly interested in, or? Michael?
Yeah, um, well, I definitely think communicating about associate member makes sense. And I think talking about what we did in two thousand twenty-five makes sense, I've got I guess I'm concerned about talking about, raising expectations about what we're gonna talk about, since we haven't fully processed it, and it's, you know, we could, through our conversations in the next couple of months, decide, oh, we're not gonna do X, Y, and Z, but we set expectations that we might be, so. I'm sort of, I mean, I, I think you know, you brought up a few months ago that you wanted to sort of communicate out to people what we were doing, um, I think what I would do is start use as the starting point, the, you know, the annual report that we had to put in, um, because it captures some of that information, you know, and it's already, we voted on and approved it, um, and maybe just talk more generally about what the planning board does, because I think one of the challenges for most committees is, people don't know what the committees do. You know, they know the name, this, you know, FinCom, they do the budget, Select Board does like everything. Um, but aside from that, I don't think people really get it, um, so I, I'm ju, I'm a little concerned that we would, you know, in some regards, it might get people to pay attention and come to meetings, but they also might come with intentions, thinking we're on the verge of deciding something, and we even have, we haven't even talked it through yet, so that, that's my, my hesitancy, I guess, but, no, I'd be interested to hear what other people think.
Does anyone else have a response to that?
What a quiet bunch.
I think. Thank you, I think, like, the way it's worded is important, you know, and but people often get confused or just see what they want to see and don't catch everything, so, I don't know, if we could say something along, I, I think the idea of explaining what the planning board does is a very good starting point, and then I'm not opposed to saying we're discussing these things, you know, the data centers, things that have been discussed, but that we have no set plan for any of them, they're just areas that we're exploring right now.
Uh, yes, uh, I was, thank you, actually, I was gonna say something like, uh, fu- future possible topics may include something like that. Um, and that way, um, it may, you know, prove their interest, and yet it doesn't commit us to, um, talking about anyone in particular. Future topics, you know, few, possible future topics include such and such.
And what about, sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna note, I mean, you know, the data center thing is on today's agenda, right, uh, manufactured housing is, uh, completely theoretical at this point. And, yeah, now, I, you know, I would, uh, you know, I, I wanted to note in, in my bullets that, you know, with data centers, you know, there's, uh, there's concerns about the use in town. But there's also another side to it, which is that, you know, if, if there could be potential revenue there, um. With, uh, manufactured housing, we don't really, we haven't really looked at that at all, you know, it's kind of, it's, that's the kind of thing that keeps kind of coming up, like, really skin deep, and we haven't gotten as any very much substance. Keith? Oh, yeah, I would think just leave it at bullet points and don't go into any, you know, the issues that are on our radar, data centers, affordable housing, uh, the other stuff, and, and not go into uh, why we're interested in these things, I mean, I, the people can tune in if we have it on an agenda where we're really gonna discuss it, but again, the, on any one of those things, it would be a laundry list of, of issues or concerns that, that we might talk about. Um, I guess it's just to, just to give the public an idea that that we're aware of these things, that we're, we're not blind to the data center issue or affordable housing or things like that. But we, because we really don't know what direction we're gonna go just yet. Of course, yeah, no, I mean, I, you know, I'm not, uh, I mean, the, the, the purpose of, of doing any communication and noting specifically data centers and specifically affordable housing, even so, so go, going so far as, uh, manufactured, uh, houses would be to alert the community that there is a possibility that the, the board is gonna submit to annual town, to town, to a town meeting, um, you know, uh, bylaw amendments, you know, right, at this point, there's no draft amendments, like, you know, I can be specific about that, and say that, you know, there's, uh, you know, with data centers, you know, the, this is a discussion that started, you know, with affordable housing and, uh, manufactured houses. And it's been ongoing conversations about affordable housing, but this isn't something that we've, uh, delved into deeply, um, you know, time permitting, it's, it's something the board may end up, uh, reviewing further, time permitting, right? But, did, did you say you were, this is, this is last year's achievements also? Last year's achievements would be the um, A D U amendment, the, uh, tiny house amendment, and. Lighting, was the lighting last year? That was two years ago. What about the Wheelock site visit? That was, uh, that was last summer.
August, I think.
Yeah, August of last year? I was, I was thinking mostly, uh, legislative, uh. Okay, all right. I mean, I, you know, I can. I mean, it's the duties of the board, I mean, we're, we're policing our permits. Well, that would be a great thing, uh, you know, I, I could note that too, I could note that there was a Wheelock site visit, I was not on it. Just so the citizens know they're getting their money's worth. No, that's, that's a great addition, um.
I think this is a good conversation, I mean, it really, you know, I, I like the idea of Ashley talking about, you know, exploring, and, you know, Jeff's thing about discussing, like, it is on our radar. I mean, I think those things, like you said, you know, people should know, we're thinking about them, they should be aware of them. Um, and then, you know, it does help round out what the board's about, that we actually have regulatory oversight responsibilities, so I think that's cool. Um, the other, I think the last thing I would say, you know, is it's always good to let people know when we meet and invite. It's always good to let people know when we meet and invite public comment, you know, so like. Just say, hey, we meet the second choose Monday of every month and we welcome input, um, because. Most people have no idea.
Alright, um. That's right.
Nothing about the lawsuit?
I, you know, when.
There's, there's, there's nothing about the lawsuit in the, in the town announce.
I mean, I know it's like not something that we can share any details about, but. If people, that, I'm sure that's the thing people are most curious about.
Should I, should I put something in there? Like, you know, obviously, you know, the, there is a. There's ongoing litigation that I'm not going to speak of now, but stay tuned.
I. I think you can say, I mean, it's public knowledge and. You know, November fourth is our court date. And we can't communicate anything else, but I, I do think. It's important to mention the elephant in the room, otherwise people would be like, why didn't you say that?
Sure, that's, that's a good point. Alright, so, um. Alright, so we're gonna say introduction review PV responsibilities.
Is there a link to the court where people, we could give people a link directly to the court for court documents?
Yeah, well, the two things we should do, I can, I can share it with you because it's, it's not particularly user friendly. There's a link to the court and then you have to know the docket number. So I can, I'll send that to Nathan and then people should be able to get to it. I only know the docket number because it's saved in my cache. Otherwise, I would, I could never find it.
As I said, the board conducted, um. So I'm, I'm gonna add a review PB responsibilities. I'm gonna keep that kind of simple. I'm, you know, mentioning that, uh, well, yeah, I'll. I'll say. Board conducted a. Viewing prior year, I'll, I'll mention the bylaw amendments that were passed and also the board conducted a site visit to Wheelock Solar Development. And is that like, you know, or Wheelock Solar Project, Solar Site? Wheelock Solar Site?
Uh, we called it, it, it's now NextTerra, but everybody knows it as the Wheelock Site. But I, I think it's the next era of something, something technically.
I can say operated by NextTerra, or, you know, I don't know if it's, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, the important, the important thing is, is that, uh, I, I'll note that, you know, the. You know, it was allowed by a special permit and that.
Yeah. We're assessing site conditions.
Right.
Uh, or permit conditions laid out in the, the original permits or something like that.
Could call it Wheelock. I mean, yeah, that's the, that's the vernacular that we use. So if people came to meetings, that's what they would be hearing.
Alright, so I've, I've added. Review of PB responsibilities, replying achievements, we had the amendments, we're gonna add Wheelock Site Visit. For twenty twenty six initiatives, we're gonna keep it. Note that there's been some conversation already pertaining to data centers. I'll, uh. I guess I'll skip going into concerns and pros and cons on that. Is that the consensus on that? Oh, and I'm gonna, uh. For PP responsibilities, note the regular meeting schedule. And.
And then Nathan, I think we sort of jumped all the substance, but. We've got existing language from pitching the associate member stuff, so if you want to just grab that, I think that's easy enough.
Yeah, no, I think I'll do that. Um, and you know, with, uh. I'm not gonna lie, I toy with putting out there that, uh. You know, I was voted in as chair against my will for the third time and encouraging people to, uh. To, to run, uh, you know, to, to be my replacement, but first you probably want to get on as associate member and serve a couple of years and then, you know. Become a full board member, so on and so forth, but that might be a little bit too, uh. Hammy, but.
I, one question I do have, which I think we've discussed each time is. Do we want to set a deadline for people to express interest or just because there's pretty much no interest, just have it be rolling?
Yeah, I, I would, I would think rolling would be fine. I don't know if, uh. You know, a deadline is gonna, uh. Scare anyone into, uh, doing it, but I mean, I don't know, I could, uh. Does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
You know, it's worth a try. If it works, great. If it doesn't work, we extend the deadline, you know. So nobody feels left out like they just missed it.
So use, uh. Prior to our regularly scheduled, uh, oh, October, we don't have a regularly scheduled meeting.
Why is that?
Columbus Day.
Okay, so we have to move it.
Yeah, you, I think we'll probably shoot for the Monday after. Um, but that's, uh. Well, we, we can address that offline. I don't know if that's, uh. Free for folks or not, but we'll, we'll talk about it. Mateo?
Just further to this, um, there is going to be a special town meeting in late September or early October, and that would be another opportunity to. Speak to the town about the opening.
Oh, yes, indeed, absolutely. So I'll say, uh, I'll just use, um. How about we go with, uh, before regularly, uh.
Labor Day.
There you go.
Labor Day.
Yeah, it's September first, it's the week before, it's a holiday.
When does the town announce go out?
Oh, I have to write it.
And then you just put it on there. It's not like, there's not a deadline.
No, no.
It ought to be March by the time Nathan writes it.
That's, yeah, okay, yeah.
You know, i- if we pitch it as a rare and unusual opportunity. Has come up.
Lucrative.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, lucrative. Uh, yeah. If what you're looking for is character development.
Yeah, we could pitch it as you want, you want to learn how democracy still works in a small town.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
How old does one have to be to be an associate member?
Voting age.
So, I mean, you could theoretically, um, pass it on to, uh, maybe, uh. As a history teacher, a social studies teacher at the high school, there might be some Schutzbury, you know. Uh, Schu- Schu- Schutzbury students who could do this as a extra credit project or something like that.
I'll volunteer you to do that.
And then, and then report back to, you know, the class in terms of how town government works, but you might be able to, um. Get that as an extra credit project through, um, the high school for a Schutzburyan. I'm just throwing this out.
They have to do a civics project, it's required by the state, so that, I can't think of a better one.
Yeah, so that would be a great project. Uh, is that required for all, um, all high school students?
All high school students, it's, it's basically like. What we have as history teachers for MCAS, because there's no history MCAS.
Then this would be, this would be perfect to run, run it through the, um, the principal at the high school. And ask permission to pass it on to, um, or write something and ask them. To pass it on to the history teachers regarding, uh, Schutzbury, you know, Schutzbury students who are in high school as a, um, as a project.
Yeah.
I, I, so, I like the spirit of it, but I don't think practically it makes sense. So I think about, you know, like. Amherst Regional, when they had student representatives on the school committee. They're, they're there for the school year and then they disappear and often they're, you know, seniors are graduating, so. I mean, I think Keith is a living example of our success, which is your stars associate member, and you. Figure out what's going on, and so when the opening is there, you step in, and it's, it's not necessarily the only way to do it. But I wouldn't want to have someone sort of. Be around for nine months and then disappear. Um, it's, it's not, it doesn't help us, um, especially.
Is the appointment for associate member, I forgot, is it a year?
Two year, yeah. Yeah, no, yeah, it's, uh, I mean, it would be better, um, to, uh. Have them take minutes or something for, uh. One of the boards that doesn't have a clerk.
I mean, I, I think it's a nice idea to offer the opportunity. Uh, for students in high school, but maybe not as in a formal associate member. Because as, you know, as Michael said, and some of you also said, after nine months, who knows what's gonna happen. Yeah, they go away to college, they got priorities, right? Um, but, so I think we could offer the opportunity, but we still should look for associate members who. Live in town and have a commitment to, to, uh, being here for a while.
Yeah, now, you know, uh, doing a civics opportunity with the high school to get people involved in town and municipal government is a, a great idea. Uh, associate members. Not the best entry point for that, arguably, but I think, uh, you know, that's something that, uh, could definitely be pursued. It would probably be best if it was. You know, like a kind of a broadened, uh. A group of people, not just from us, to kind of consider where's a good fit for that to go in, um. You know, where, where's, uh. You know, where might we do, uh, the most bang for the buck with the high school student that is, uh. Doing a mandatory civics project, right? So.
I mean, I, I do love the idea of. You know, to Steve's point, you know, creating opportunities for democracy to be lived and learned. Uh, you know, because if someone, if someone actually participated in it. It would be worth us thinking about how to do that, because. Why would you, we have to, you have to sort of have an understanding of. If you had a, say, a student representative for the planning board. They couldn't vote, but we would want them to participate and share ideas and bring things forward, and so why would we give them more airtime and access? To discussion than the public, and so we have to sort of create a thing which validates that participation. So I think it's a great idea. I think the more we can do to support people learning, you know. How local government works would be great. Um, so I'd totally be on, on board with doing it. It would be, I mean, I think, I would actually talk to Haley, because I think. If we could do it in, in multiple committees and come up with some, you know, job description, so to speak. Or this is, you know, you're not a voting member, but you're participating and there's some process. Um, you know, Haley. As I talked to her about this, you know, the select board wanted to formalize the nomination process for appointed. Members of committees, so it wasn't so willy nilly, and so she now has a forum where people have to say. What their background is, what they're interested in, and so I think. She'd probably be interested in this kind of stuff. Um, I, I, it's a really cool idea.
Yeah, you know, I mean, when you think about it, uh, town hall has gone through a pretty substantial amount of turnover between Becky leaving and, uh.
Police chief.
Oh, police chief, I'm thinking, uh, was it Mary Ann or, uh, the, the former administrative secretary?
Oh, you're talking about Linda?
Yeah, yeah, Linda Ava Scott, that's the one, sorry. But yeah, you know, I mean, you know, there's like a few people in that have been in town hall forever, you know, and then, you know. At this point, there's been, you know, a large amount of turnover, right? We have, uh. Leslie in the assessor's office that's been there forever, but, and some other folks too, but it's, uh. A lot of, you know, relatively newer faces, all things considered.
Can, can I make another comment? And, um, well, it, it might be possible if we don't want to do high school, it could be possible to do, um. Uh, you know, UMass, the Schutzbury, Schutzbury students at UMass in the history department. Or, or GCC or, you know, Holyoke Community College or anywhere. You know, uh, where Schutzbury students go, they might be willing to do that commitment, it's only one year, and, um. I realize it's not as good as someone coming in who's, you know. Like Keith and someone with getting experience and then, you know, moving on to another, you know. A real, a book, planning board member, but we might not get other people interested. And better to have, um, a college student from Schutzbury in history as an associate member. Because the goal is to have, um, to not go into a situation where we don't have enough people to vote. Um, and they could be, you know, they could be made real members for that particular, um, meeting time. So that's the real goal is, I mean, the goal is to train people, but also to avoid a situation where if we don't have a quorum, then anything could pass. Right?
Yes, now, uh, we've gone on, this is, I like these ideas, I do, but it's, it's, uh. It's certainly at this point diverging from the topic at hand, which will be the town announce, which is not going to, uh. Deal with, uh. The high school or, or college. But I will, uh, so just to try and.
Maybe a reminder in there that even eighteen year olds could do this, if there's a civic mind and eighteen year old in town. And I love the idea, Jeff, of reaching out to the local schools and. The civics project happens when they're juniors, by the way, so they're, most of them aren't eighteen yet.
I don't know if that has to be voting age, actually, I, I, you know, I mean.
Wow.
I mean, you can be an appointed member and not be a Schutzbury resident, like, I know on the concom, there's a non-Schutzbury residents. I don't, you know.
Not for the planning board, because the planning board is an elected body. The associate member must be a resident.
Right, 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 I know, but I don't know for age wise, like. Because we're, we're jointly appointing someone. They, they, I don't know if they could run for elected office if they can't vote, I don't know, probably not, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's fair. I don't know either, for sure. I would be hard pressed to, uh, support somebody who was not of voting age to serve on this committee as associate member, though. They would have to be a, a literal. Genius, certifiable genius.
They're out there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking this through and I'm like, you know. We make some pretty consequential decisions as a board, like that affects people's lives and, and.
But again, we digress, we digress.
Kind of need somebody with maybe a little more. Wisdom, I guess.
Well, I, I just want, you know, it's an opportunity to experience working democracy at a local level, right? That's, uh, Steve's, and then, was there, there was one other one. Um, well, it was a reminder that, uh, you know, what, um. You only need to be eighteen, is that what someone just said?
Yeah, like, you know, as long as you're of voting age.
Yeah.
Certainly know that age doesn't equate with intelligence, um, we certainly know that.
Fair, fair.
The override in Belcher Town, which kept my school from completely falling apart, passed by eighteen votes. And there was about that many high school seniors. At the meeting.
Wow.
Yeah, they made it happen. They're very, they can get very involved, but yeah, they, they take off and fly to the four directions once they graduate, they're all gone, so. It's tricky.
Okay, I think I have what I need, um. So, uh. I might tap someone on the shoulder to just do a, uh, second review once I write it. But, uh, thank you for the feedback on that. Um, I'll have taken notes. as I've uh, iterated here. And now I think uh, unless anyone else has any last call, uh, aside from the uh, high school and college program to uh, talk about in that uh, communication. Okay. Now, next item, we have a PB designated to FERCog.
Do you want me to summarize?
I'm sorry, I just, um, Mary Lou, were you about to put your hand up there? Were you trying to say something?
Hi, yes. Um, I was a little late on public comment. I don't know if I can ask the question now or not.
No, at my discretion. Today, Mary, I will uh, I will allow her.
Okay, thank you. So I, I came in tonight to ask um, if there's any kind of update on the solar project that's um, coming to town. Um, just to give you a little background, I asked select board and in that email I had Haley CC. And they said something about that. I didn't understand, maybe Mateo, because he goes by the book, could understand that they said they're in executive session. And that was the answer. So I, I just wonder, have they come to you for um, you know, permission to build or? Yeah.
No, no, uh, no applications have, no special permit applications have been submitted to the planning board to uh, develop any uh, solar uh, projects at this time.
Good, good, good. Thank you.
But you know, Mary Lou, thank you, because you reminded me of one item I forgot to add on my list for our prior agenda item, which is the uh, their town announcement, which was, we're, we're gonna briefly mention that we have a ongoing litigation.
Hmm.
At a court date of November fourth.
Say what, Michael?
We have a court date of November fourth.
November fourth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yes. Now, now that's, now that's in my notes. I, 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 I missed that, so I'm glad I got that. That's right. Thank you, Mary Lou. Okay. Um, yes.
Do you want me to summarize Jessica's email about the FERCog? Planning board, I sent it to everybody. I don't know if everybody committed to memory.
You know, I'm uh, for this agenda item, Michael, I'm not as much interested in talking about that as I am trying to figure out if anyone wants to uh, if we want to designate someone to, to serve on the board.
Well, I think it relates.
Yeah, it might, I guess it does. Um, so, that's, that's fair.
Yeah, I mean, well, when we, we were trying to last time, we were trying to figure out, so ERCOG was changing its charter. And one of the questions was, how does the change in the charter affect the Franklin County Regional Planning Board? Um, so I reached out to Jessica Adwood, who's the planning director of FERCOG. And so she wrote back and I forwarded this to everybody, but the current charter, which I don't know if it's officially changed yet, but will be soon. Um, currently has one planning board member from each town and one select board member or their designate. But under the new charter change, um, it looks like Jessica is gonna be able to recommend procedural changes to how the planning board works. And what she wrote was that she's gonna ask each local planning board chair for a recommendation for someone. Um, and it could be someone with, on the planning board, the ZBA, the Concom, a recent board member or a municipal planner or community development staff person in town. So I think um, and then we also wanted to know, like, okay, is there change in frequency? Because we care about how often we have to go to these meetings. And she said currently it's six times a year. They're considering under the new charter, only doing it four times a year. So I don't think the new paradigm is in place yet and official, but I mean, what I took away from this is that you can, as chair, you can see if someone's interested and then appoint them now and have it just carry over. Um, but it doesn't look like the select board's gonna be part of that. It's really sort of people with some planning role, but it could be it could be you saying someone on the ZBA wants to do it and, you know, a more expanded pool of applicants, so to speak. Having said all that, I'd be, I'm fine with doing it. If, I, I think I had mentioned that last time, but.
You did. There was, I guess, a question of whether or not uh, Tom to do it or not. And uh, we said, you know, there's not a meeting between last month and this month. Um, so, you know, we'll ask Tom if if uh, he's come to any kind of uh, feeling about whether he wants, really wants to do it or not. And then uh, we can see what he says.
He's here.
I know. Yeah, by the way, welcome, Tom. He, he jumped in, I think around the time um, Mary Lou was asking her a question.
Oh, it was actually about the teenagers and the high schoolers. Um.
Oh, okay.
No worries. Uh, thank you. I'm so sorry I'm late. Um, I would probably benefit from being second tier or, you know, second string. If Michael were really willing, that would be helpful for me more than committing to it. But I am able to commit to it if needed. Hope that was clear.
Okay. Um, do I hear a motion to uh, for the planning board to designate Michael DeCara as our representative to the FERCOG uh, planning board?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Steve moves. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Weston seconds, any discussion? Michael, thank you.
Sure.
Alright, I will call the roll. Hi, Chris.
Hi.
Ressler.
Hi.
Weston.
Hi.
Hasty.
Hi.
DeCara.
Hi.
Yeah, I'm an I. The motion carries unanimously. Outstanding.
I will dutifully represent us.
That's uh, without a doubt.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, now we get to our, the, we get to discuss data centers and uh, potential bylaw amendments. Michael has done some research. He's sent it to the board. So, Michael, why don't you go ahead and, and speak?
Okay, so I sent something, I think, last weekish, and then I sent something earlier this evening with some updated stuff. Um, so, you know, Nathan alluded to some of this stuff, you know, so it's, it's in writing, but just to sort of identify, you know, it's definitely, and the article I sent this morning from Politico, just like came across my threshold and I thought I'd share that, but it's a nationally evolving issue, you know, it's directly connected to the growth of AI. Um, and I think the identified issues, you know, to bullet point them, they often require high water usage. They often have high electrical usage. Um, there's exhaust. Um, when they're using backup generators, which they need to do for, you know, even if they're run on solar or something, they need backup for twenty-four seven access. There's noise issues, um, depending on the size, they require a lot of land. Um, given what they are, there's needs for security and lighting so that they're secure facilities and the twenty-four seven operations. So, um, they definitely have an imprint wherever they are. Um, there, it looks like, you know, in terms of zoning, it's, it's evolving, you know, so there's some communities that are embracing them because they do make money and other places where they're not. Um, I think the other thing I would say, just from the ones on today, which I think is, I found really helpful, is that um, I was trying to think about, okay, there's the issues, and then there's how do you regulate them as, you know, as a regulatory body. And so the two things I was thinking about is what the definitions are, you know, so we would want to put data centers in the definition section of the bylaw, whatever we do, um, assuming that we do something. Um, it seems like, you know, the thing I sent out today was, it had a definition from IBM and from Cisco, which seems like pretty reputable IT companies and then a couple of other websites, but they all basically say the same thing. Which is, you know, it's a physical structure that houses IT infrastructure for storing and managing data, um, and, you know, includes servers and routers and all the required hardware. The interesting thing, which is a little bit harder to get one's head around, not, not too complex, but, you know, there's different types. So there's co-location, which is like someone will build one and people can buy a piece of it. You know, sort of like a shared office space kind of thing where, you know, you need data storage and management, but you don't have the facility to sort of do a big one. Then there's enterprise or, or a large enterprise, that's sort of the, the really big companies. There's cloud-based ones, which is like the Amazon, Google. Um, and they all, they all sort of show up on the ground in a similar way. It's just a matter of size. Um, and then there's two interesting ones. One's called an edge data center, and then the other's called a micro data center, and those are smaller. Um, what was in the thing I sent you, it says the edge data centers, they're intentionally smaller and closer to the end user. So, you know, I think the idea is that you can have multiple ones of these so that they can be redundant. And there's less latency because the, the signals don't have to travel as far. Um, and then a micro data center is just a smaller version of that. Um, I get the impression that those are sort of growing, um, as opposed to the, the, the micro, the, the macro ones. Um, and then I think the last thing I would share, well, I got two things to share, but one is I was thinking about size, you know, so we think about solar, we think about battery storage, or we think about um, even residential, it's all about size, you know, how many acres, how many megawatts, et cetera. The two articles that I felt found compelling, which I shared, both say that you can't just look at the energy used as a size, so you can't say a data center is X, you know, using X megawatts of energy. Um, that it's really a combination of factors. So it's energy, it's water, it's land use, and, you know, actual like square footage. Um, taking collectively, so it's sort of a multifactorial, like what's their capacity, which is sort of interesting, because I think initially I started thinking, well, well, just like we think about, say, batteries, like what's a, what's a reasonable sized battery that could be, you know, housed in Schutzbury? Um, it's, it doesn't seem like it's as easy as that. Um, so that's sort of the background, and I think just I'll, I'll throw out what I've been thinking and then we could sort of just chat, but I I'm sh, I don't want to do anything, you know, quickly and irresponsibly, but on the other hand, you know, Nathan and I had a little bit of back and forth in where you're talking about the light industry. And I think personally it would be a mistake to consider it light industry, because then it allows a special permit and a whole process, and it can go into different parts of town. And then we get stuck in the, in sort of a a regulatory process we might not want to be in. And it seems like having a data center use designated is the better way to go. Just say, here's a definition of a data center. And then here, and then put something in the use table that's separate, you know, so just like other things, it's, it's its own beast. Because clearly I think it is its own beast. And then we can decide what it is. So it seems like that's an approach. And then I guess my last thought is I, ever since I found out there's gonna be a special town meeting in the fall, part of it was like, can we just add a category with a definition? You know, for the fall, that says this is what the definition of a data center is. And prohibit it in all zones and then spend the rest of the year having a conversation, but actually having something that's protective in place while we have the chance, because it seems like these things are, you know, getting looked at actively. Um, and I wouldn't want us to get sort of s, stuck. Um, the last thing I'll just say, and I don't have an answer to this, but there is, I think there's a debate that if a, if a use is not in the use table, some people say, if it's not in the use table, then it can't be done in a municipality. And other people say, if it's not in the use table, it's not prohibited from being a use. So I don't know which way it falls. But I think there's a danger of not having it be named, because then you have to stick, you have to shoehorn it in. If you feel like you have to find a place for it, and the only shoehorn is probably light industry. So that's, that's all my thinking. The, to start this off.
So, Michael, what if we, I agree with you about the, adding the definition, you know, that it part is easy. Um, and what about as a temporary fix, rolling it into light industry, so we can buy time to properly write a bylaw specifically for data centers?
Well, I, so I mean, my sense, I'm I worry about in light, light industry, because as Nathan said, like, I don't know, half an hour ago, it can go into rural residential, it can go into forest conservation. And then we sort of, what if it's really big and, you know, like, do we want it, we might be finding ourselves having a conversation and then getting sued for something that, you know, we're, we're backed into. Um, what I, what I, I guess what I was thinking is, if you put it in the use table and you just prohibit it, we're not writing a bylaw, we're just changing the use table. And then it gives us the rest of the year to actually have a conversation and come up with a substantive bylaw where.
I think that's what I was suggesting, actually. I, I made it clear about that. Um, it buys us time to do just that, to come up with a well-thought-out bylaw.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a great idea. I mean, what I've read about these um, data centers is, some of them use like a half a million gallons of water a day. So, um, you can imagine that depleting our aquifers in, you know, a few weeks. So, um, I think we should put something in the books if we can during this upcoming meeting to prohibit it completely. And then, and then fine tune it. It's a, it, it would be disastrous for this town to have something like that in, with our only water supply as our aquifers.
What could such a development be built in this town?
You never know.
Maybe. Oh, actually. I'm thinking about, you know, UMass and Hampshire College and Amherst College and, uh, the, the edge thing that you mentioned, you know, that's, that seems like a possibility that someone might seek out. Because it's close to the universities and um, obviously they're gonna need a lot more capacity for AI as well. I did watch the video, Michael, that you posted about uh, what UMass is, like the work that they're doing there. And so at least they're being conscious about it, like they're studying it, but I don't know. I mean, I think anything's possible. We're in a new world.
What is this video? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, the UMass is working on, um, there's a, a group of scholars that are working on uh, figuring out the carbon output. Correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, of AI systems and how to um, how to mitigate and not mitigate, but how to make as little carbon output as possible, basically. If you watch it, you'll see, I'm sure I'm getting it wrong, but it's something along those lines. But like, as far as what could be built in this town, sure. I mean, why couldn't Amazon come in and knock down a hundred acres and use our water and, I mean.
Well, because they would have to, they would have to apply for a special permit from us.
Of course, which, you know, we can, yeah.
I don't know about it, but if, if there was a project application before this, that was gonna use a hundred, how many, how many gallons, Jeff?
You're muted.
You're muted. Your identification is muted.
I think you said half a million a day.
Yeah, half a million gallons a day, you know, I can't imagine that, so.
I'm sorry, half a million gallons a day to cool down the AI computers. And that completely sucked up the water from their aquifer, wherever it was. I'm, I can't remember, Arizona or something, and, yeah. Um, yeah, it's, um, I think we should have something in the book saying, um.
We do. Yeah, we have something on the books. Now, I mean, you know, I, I noted concern over the uh, use of the general conditions, right? And I've been it might be worth trying to review it more. But it's a I mean, obviously, you know, the uh, you know, if we look at what those uh,
you know, if we look at what those, uh, conditions are, um, there's lots of conditions in there about, you know, unacceptable environmental impact. I believe there's conditions that touch specifically upon water and aquifers, right? So, uh, it's not like someone can just come in and build a gigantic mega data center in this town. Well, I think it's, it's not practical, but it doesn't mean it can't be done. Like, I think what comes to mind is, I don't know how, it was two decades ago, maybe longer, when I think it was Coke wanted to, you know, pump water out of Montague for its, you know, DeSantis business. You know, which would have depleted the aquifer, you know, and so it wasn't like Coke was thinking about, you know, are we going to deplete the water supply in Montague? It's that they were looking for places to get water so they can bottle it and sell it. So I, I guess, given our saga about solar, my, my thought was keeping, you know, if you put it, put it in the use table and you prohibit it while we just come, come with something that's a little bit more nuanced. It keeps us out of, you know, potential litigation or like, it sends a signal that, you know, we're, we're not interested in this, um, where if it's nothing in writing, then you know, I'm guessing someone would say, well, let's try it and see what happens. Maybe they'll cave.
You know, there was a and you know, the board could be captured by a pro-development inhabitants of Schutze's Berry. Although given the, uh, trend and uncontested races, I would I would doubt that outcome. Um, and you know, this is not a, a use that is outlined in, uh, chapter forty-eight, section three. There are no protections. Right? Right? Um, now, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, we shouldn't do anything, but I'm, I'm trying to, uh, lower the temperature a little bit because, uh, we have a lot of, uh, things in place already. Um, and I just, I want us to have that. You know, I don't know. I think it's important to kind of have that properly in our, uh, heads and, and have that perspective.
It's not the end of the world if we don't do it. I totally get your point.
No, yeah, yeah. But I, I don't know currently if, if you can really define, uh, or if our definition of light and industry includes a, a data center, right? That's a you know, that's a and by, by the way, speaking of, you know, specifics for special permits, we have light industry and, uh, we don't have much in the bylaw for it. It's in the use table, isn't allowed use in two districts, but there's nothing specific to it in terms of further, uh, um, provisions in the bylaw.
Well, the definition is manufacture, assembly, treatment, processing, or packaging of products in a manner that does not emit objectional, ejection levels of smoke, noise, dust, odor, glare, or vibration beyond the property boundaries, which, you know, is probably why we all got put into there. And, you know, except, you know, there's the, the emissions from generators, which would be smoke and there is noise. There's probably no dust, no odor, no glare. I'm guessing there's no vibration. So one could make a
There could be vibrations.
Well, yeah, one could, but I think
But yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm just, yeah.
No, so one, one could argue the fact that it's light industry.
Yeah. I, I still think as a stopgap measure, and remember stopgap measure, not the final solution, is to, is to do what Michael suggested initially, which is define it in the, in the definite, in the table, in the definitions, and then add it to, uh, prohibited in the, uh, or light, either light industry or prohibited currently. And then give us a year to talk about the proper kind of bylaw to write for it.
Yeah, I agree with Steve.
I agree as well.
Keith, you're fine. Is the agreement to, um, you know, put it into, uh, light industry, which is an allowable use or put it as a separate use and prohibit it?
I would, what I was suggesting is, is the whole category for industrial that we created in two thousand twenty-four, which includes soil mining, light industry, wireless communications, and temporary wind monitoring systems. So I would add, you know, data centers to that as a fifth use within the category of industrial.
Cause keep, keep in mind, worst case scenario, if somebody comes along and proposes something before we have our bylaw ready, we can condition the heck out of, you know, and, and take care of a lot of the concerns that we all have right now. That something going up that's out of scale with Schutze's Berry.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, uh, I think the board might be on pretty solid footing right now to to say that data center does not, um, fit into an allowable use.
Certainly not rural character.
Well, I mean, light, light industry, it's, it's not manufacturer, you're not manufacturing anything, you're not assembling anything. There's no treatment. There's no processing. There's no packaging. Processing, you know, you kind of think of processes, right? You're processing data, but processing in a light industrial sense is like you're taking a raw material and processing it into a finished material. Okay? There's none of that in a data center. How is it light industry? It's not. It's not light industry.
A smart lawyer would argue with you, but I'd agree with you.
Well, you know, I mean, I'm just trying to make the point that, you know, I don't think that, um, I don't know that we could allow one. I don't know if we could allow one right now. But, um, you know, that being said, I, you know, I would be interested in, in, um, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm hesitant, my, you know, personally to to go full prohibition at this time. One, because I don't think there's a, a risk of anything, uh, coming. And my, you know, the primary, uh, factor in that would be, you know, generally speaking, obviously there are data, data centers in, in Massachusetts, but it's, uh, you know, the price of electricity here is generally high with respect to the rest of the country. Obviously there's always going to be, you know, need for some of that infrastructure, um. Now, there's other, there's other factors, uh, like going to it, like, uh, you know, access to energy is one, access to water could be one, right? And there may be other kinds of, uh, I'm not very familiar with the kind of infrastructure that goes into the, uh, internet and telecommunications, right? Which data centers are, uh, in business with. I will say that when I was speaking with, uh, uh, Gail, Gail Huntress, who is the municipal light plant manager. I mentioned that this topic had come up. You know, so this is an FYI and, uh, and she told me that if a data center were established in town, that apparently it may be, uh, one possible scenario is that the municipal light plant could sell services to the, uh, data center. Which would, uh, benefit, uh, residents in town because the cost of internet would go down. Potentially, you know, that would potentially reduce the cost of, uh, internet. But that's, uh, that's unquantified, right? But, you know, what I'm trying to say is that there, there is potential real, uh, benefit to inhabitants of Schutze's Berry. If, uh, a project came to town that wasn't unacceptable, uh, by other measures. Right? Um, you know, looking at, uh, uh, you know, I, I think it's, you know, the article Michael was talking about, which is, uh, you know, don't just measure it by its, uh, energy, um, intake. I thought that was kind of interesting because, you know, uh, everyone's talking about energy, right? But, um, I thought the, the, of the bullet points in there, the cooling capacity is interesting, right? Which is the efficiency of the data center cooling systems, um. And so inefficient, uh, cooling systems are either using a lot more energy, electricity, or a lot more water. So, yeah, you know, there's a lot of different, um, factors, but you know, again, going back to the, uh, what, what was it? Edge micro data centers?
Yeah.
Right? Right? So that's kind of near to the end users, possibly UMass and, uh, you know, some of the five colleges. And that's, yeah, you know, I don't know if that's really, you know, some of that is, you know, when you're talking about, um, I don't know, you, you're doing uh, computing that is, uh, so involved that it makes a difference whether or not you're, if you're using Amazon web services out in like Washington, right? And the speed of light is like, you know, it's pretty quick, but because it's out in Washington, it's enough, it's enough time that it's affecting what you're doing because it's so far away. And if it were in, in state in New England even, right? It's a difference. You know, that, that's like high-powered stuff. Um, my, uh, Keith?
So I think, I think maybe kind of what we're, we're talking and it's back to the, the article that Michael sent on, how do you measure it? You know, what's the metric? Yeah. And I think our concern as a town or as representative of the town is the scale of one of these things. You know, is it the size of a house or the size of an Amazon warehouse? Um, if they built, you know, if UMass built one or if anybody built one that was, you know, relatively nondescript, and they could negotiate the power from national grid or ever source, whoever they got the power from. Would the town have an issue with it? Um, again, I think we're, I, I told Michael, I, I was in Virginia recently and saw a whole bunch of these things that were and built or, or being built outside of DC. And some of them are massive, like Amazon warehouse, just four or five stories high, windowless. Um, big security fences around them, just imposing, uh, facilities. Yeah, that, that's out of place in Schutze's Berry, but a smaller nondescript building that wasn't a, uh, you know, a giant eyesore. Maybe that would be something the town would accept. I don't know. So I guess when, if we think about trying to write some kind of, uh, bylaw about this, I think scale, size, scale is probably a big thing. The water, I, you know, that's probably Jeff, one of the things that would keep them away from Schutze's Berry is that our groundwater is not easy to pump. Anybody that's got a well knows that they, they don't recharge quickly. It's a weird aquifer. It's fractured rock. It's not a sand and gravel aquifer that you can pump the heck out of. So, I mean, I don't know anybody who's going to come here that needs a lot of water. We just don't have a lot of water.
Yeah. Um, I, I don't want to, are, are you done, Keith? I don't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Um, Nathan, I, I just don't understand, um, there's no, in my, in my view of this, there's no downside of doing what Michael says. I mean, there's no downside. You just put it in and, and that's it. Um, so I don't, um, I'm, I don't quite understand your, um, your disagreement with that because there's no downside in, in inserting that in a town meeting that's coming up.
Well, the downside, if, if we're talking about prohibition, which it sounds like we are, would be that you're prohibiting a use that could potentially, one, be used, uh, uh, be a potential customer of our municipal light plant and, uh, reduce, uh, internet costs for the inhabitants of Schutze's Berry. And two, provide, uh, tax revenue to the town.
But, but we're, we're not talking about, we don't, we don't need to be talking about prohibiting it um, forever. It's almost like a moratorium. While we're like, we, you know, like, we need time to really, we can't, we don't, this is not the venue right now to discuss pros and cons or the, the details of a bylaw. It's just to discuss what can we do as a stopgap? And if we prohibit it now, we're, or we put what we call a moratorium on it right now because we don't have a bylaw. I think that's a healthy way to go and adding it to the use table as Michael suggests, I mean, definitions.
Uh, I, I strongly agree with you. There's no downside. It just gives us time to uh, prevent the, uh, unmentionable, which would be someone coming in and tapping our poor aquifers. It just basically, basically prevents something that's highly unlikely, but prevents something that's, that's possible. Um, especially like on the edge of Amherst and, you know, into Schutze's Berry. I think it's just, uh, uh, it's prudent in my view to prevent something that could be disastrous for our town.
Just to clarify, I mean, I Nathan, I am suggesting a temporary thing because I think, you know, Keith's point, and I did find that article, you know, like how do you, what are the metrics for size? It, it is about scale, you know, it could be that a smaller scale would not draw so much, or, you know, maybe we want to say for municipal use, it's allowed because we know that municipal use, you know, you could, it'd be helping the town, you know, if, if MLP contracted out some of its space or something. So like, there's a lot of subtleties, both technical and, um, you know, municipal private location, like all this stuff that we don't know. I think this is a, it's totally an emerging issue, like for the whole country. So my thought was it is doing a prohibition is, I think, equivalent to what Steve said is a moratorium, which we're not calling it a moratorium. It's probably less politically fraught to say, you know, with the AG to say it's not a moratorium. Uh, who the hell knows what they, what they would think, but
We, we did that, we did that, I think, years ago with, uh, building, uh, permits. We, we've done it with a few, I can't remember everything, Deacon, if he was here, he'd remember better. But we, we did it with a few different, uh, topics. Put a moratorium in place, got our act together, got a good bylaw, what we thought was a good bylaw at the time and put it before town. I think it's a, it's a wise way to go. There's no downside for, I, if we, if you want to call it moratorium, that's fine. You know, one year moratorium, we could put a time limit on it.
My, my concern is that, you know, my, my concern is we call it a moratorium and then it just ends up staying that way.
No, 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 we put a timeline, we put a timeframe on it. We did it with the building permits.
I mean, there, there's no the, the building per, permits are different because that's a, that's a, a single family residential use you're talking about. Okay, that's as of right use. Okay, this is not an as of rights. So it's different. And, and I think, you know, from my perspective, uh, going, you know, going right out and, and putting a prohibition in, you know, it's, uh, I don't know, maybe, you know, you could put language in the, the bylaw amendment that says, you know, this is intended on being temporary, but you know, there's, there's no temporary mechanism to it. You put in a, a prohibition and it's prohibited until uh, it goes before town meeting again and actually gets changed. And that's, in the meantime, that's sending the signal that, no, it's not welcome here. Which, you know, obviously, you know, that's favorable to, to many. And, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't think there's any risk whatsoever of any large entity coming in here and, and tapping our, our poor aquifers. Because one, I don't even know if our bylaw currently would, uh, if we could allow a data center anyway, because it doesn't fit into an existing definition and our bylaw explicitly says that use is not listed or thereby prohibited. Right? So, you know, I think taking that extra, extraordinary step of adding it just to prohibit it is, is not necessarily the direction that is most, uh, you know, beneficial.
If you replace the word prohibited with a one-year moratorium, because you can put a time limit on a moratorium. I don't think the AG would have any problem with that.
Well, that could, that could be, that could be, uh, I, you know, what I was going to suggest is the, we've, we've got the, uh, these, uh, edge, uh, edge micro, uh, smaller outfits, right? You know, that's probably the kind of thing that one might actually, a developer might in the right mind want to come to Schutze's Berry for. And two, that might actually be, um, okay for us because it's a smaller facility. And Jeff, you're shaking your head, but why?
We can respectfully disagree. There's no way in my mind that a data center drawing whatever, half a million gallons, even two hundred fifty thousand gallons or a hundred thousand gallons of water are, would be beneficial to our town. There's no way in my mind. Um, and I come from training as a biologist at Tufts and aquifers and water
Is it, is it a factual statement that all data centers?
No, I'm talking, no, 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 I'm talking about data centers in our town. Not for data centers, for example, perhaps next to a river that could, you know, that could, uh, um, afford to, you know, lose a half a million gallons. I, I think the danger, I, I suppose I, I can't quite understand, Nathan, it's okay. This is why we have seven members. I cannot understand why you would oppose. Why you would oppose. A statement giving a moratorium for a year until we could come up with a um uh uh until we can come up with bylaws, there's no downside to it. I just don't understand your opposition to it. I'll I'll be very honest. I just don't understand it. We could put in a moratorium for a year. And then discuss it further and um it would safeguard us in case of the. You know, the high highly unlikely possibility that uh someone would come in and try to do it. There's no downside to it. I suppose that's why I don't understand. If there was a downside, I could understand your um disagreement, but there's no downside to it.
There is a, I mean, might be there's a down, there's a potential downside if uh if we miss an opportunity to uh. Increase the tax base. Now, I I, you know, I'm not under the impression that that is going to involve half a million gallons of water a day. You know, I'm under the impression that small facilities probably don't use any water for cooling.
I know.
That's a that's a discussion to have when we start to think about a bylaw. That kind of discussion.
Sure.
Data centers, edge data centers, all.
It's also a discussion. I mean, I think it's pertinent discussion now because we're talking about, you know, prohibiting it across the board as a a moratorium.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about for one year, not a big deal.
For one year.
Not a big deal.
So the other way to go is a is a middle ground. Is. Nathan, because you you cited, you know. The line in the use table language, it says uses that are not listed below are prohibited unless state or federal laws preclude such prohibition. I mean. What do you think about? Having a warrant article that says um. Town, you know, town meeting agrees. That per the zoning by law, uses that are not listed below are prohibited. The town does not consider data centers to be light industry or other any other named use. Because the issue is. Backing into a use that it shouldn't be, you know, and the only one that's probably likely is. Light industry at this point, but. Um, you know, not saying anything creates the opportunity that. It could, you know. We might, oh, we might want a data center. You're you're right. We don't know enough about, you know, if there's a small. Well configured thing like that's a conversation for later, but what we don't want to do is be able to have to. Having to defend regulating something as light industry when we don't think it's light industry, regardless of what you say. Um, I mean, the reality is solar is not doing any processing either. It's all electrons, just like a data center, and yet we lock with light industry. So it could be argued, you know, by anyone who's got an argument to make.
I I I uh.
I think that was a different scenario.
Why?
Because I think I think in that scenario. The board wanted to regulate a use. Under the special permit framework because otherwise is that use was protected under. Forty eight section three, it would have been allowed by right. So by shoehorning it into light industry, you get to say it's a special permit. But a a lawyer could argue that if you allowed Wheelock, which deals with electrons. Why are you not considering a data center which uses electrons, light industry as well? I mean.
I suppose that's that's true. But I would like, what I would like to do is uh.
And that can that gets into. Wait, wait, but that gets us into the quandary of having to fend ourselves and pay more legal fees, which the town shouldn't have to do. So it seems like the easy, more conservative approaches to prohibit it before we end up at a legal quagmire. Figure out what we want to do. And then proceed in a thoughtful manner as opposed to backing into a legal mess and people get pissed at us again because we're spending money on. Legal fees that no one really wants to spend money on.
Well, I I would certainly agree that we don't want to get ourselves into a situation where we have to be uh. Spending uh money on a bunch of legal fees. Now, uh.
Can I say something?
One moment, I I would like to uh. Reach out to Donna and pose the question on data centers and whether or not uh. What where are we standing, right? With the questions of the bylaws, it's written with the questions of uh the prior. Uh. Precedence that may have been, may or may not have been set. By, you know, treating PV a PV solar project as light industry. Even though arguably it doesn't fit into that definition. Based on how, you know, what, you know. So, yeah, I I would I would like to, you know, consult, you know, hear from. Uh town council. I'm interested in exploring um. And I understand, you know, the the broader board may not be with me on this, but I'm interested in exploring, you know, uh. With these smaller ones, you know, like, is it, uh, you know, are there ones that? You know, don't require water for cooling? Because I think that's an important question is that's a primary concern that we have. Because i- if if that was the case, then. You know, that could be added. And I I would, I would.
But that's the bylaw development. That's the stuff that we have to do.
Right, right.
But the but the but I mean, you know, if we can add in anything in the bylaw for a special town meeting, we can add in, we can add in that too. No, because how do you know what, where do you, where do you put it on the continuum of appropriateness?
All you have to do is develop a regular, you know, just a regulation that says, you know, no, uh, you know, if you define a data center uh as an allowable use. Um, or, you know, you say there's a footprint and you say provided that, you know, no data center, so. Uh draw water from a well in shoots very for or or any other water source derived in shoots very for purposes of cool.
I think. Are you done?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, um. Well, I mean. I would like to know more about the definition of light industry and where I find. That information, where do I, is that a state thing or are you talking about in our bylaws?
It's in our bylaw.
I have a couple. That's in our bylaw. Where?
In the definition at the end.
Okay, I'll look. Um, and I mean. Just based on what I'm gleaning just from listening, this could totally be off, like. Data centers are producing something that is a commodity. Whether it's tangible or not, it's it's something that's worth money that people are buying and selling. And possessing. And so. I imagine if I was a lawyer, I would go that route, like. There's plenty of things that aren't tangible that are worth something. And we're in, you know, we're in a brave new world with all of this, and I'm sure that all of these companies that are building these data centers have lawyers who are. Going to be perusing bylaws in the places where they want to put these things and trying to figure out how they can do it. And. You know, yes, it's highly unlikely that we're going to get anything massive in shoots very. It's. I have no idea if it's likely we're going to get an edge or a micro either, but that seems more tangible, more possible. Meantime, while we figure it out. And while we see how things play in the next year. Play out, I would be in favor of prohibiting it. Um, that said, like, I'm a little concerned, like, even if we do that, are we potentially inviting a lawsuit? Because it, I don't know if anyone else in the state is doing anything like this. You know, we always are sort of leaders on this kind of stuff. Um. So that's something to consider. You know, we might be inviting some attention our way if we choose to do this. But I feel like it's really the right path. I mean, these. So many thousands of these are going to get built in the next few years and universities are going to need them. Everybody's going to need them. Um, and it feels negligent to me to just do nothing. To just say, let's trust that our bylaws will prohibit it because I I don't. Think that that doesn't feel safe to me. But as Jeff said, we can agree to disagree. Um, I just think it's it's prudent. And responsible to the people of this town for us to give ourselves a year to study it, consider it, see how it plays out. And i- it's just a year, like if people have to wait a year to to invest in the tax base of our town, they'll wait if they wanted enough. My two cents.
So let me try again. Let's replace the word prohibited with moratorium. And if, as we all say, and we know this is a growing. Uh, data centers are a thing that's going to come, right? Then a year is not going to make a difference. If if after the year, whatever the board decides, whatever bylaw we end up with. At least we'll have done our homework, we'll be thoughtful about it. And it's only for a year and and if it's a growing trend, that year is going to be nothing. But not doing anything like this, like not putting a moratorium on it is more, we're in more jeopardy than doing it a moratorium for a year.
Um, I I I strongly agree with you, Steve, and also Ashley.
Yeah, I think it comes, Nathan, I think it comes down to trusting town meeting because. You know, if this group. Is saying we want to. Put it on hold for a year. And come up with a thoughtful bylaw, we're going to have the conversation in those subsequent months about. What a thoughtful bylaw is and debate all that kind of stuff. So I think we can commit to each other that that's what we want to do. It really then is like, okay, so if town meeting. Approves an updated temporary use table and definition. Do you trust a town meeting when we come up with the full blown bylaw? And we maybe change the use table would go along. And my sense is. They've gone along if we could explain our thinking. Um, so, you know, it's it's sort of, it's on us to be able to to convey that.
I mean, I hear you and I understand that, you know, I'm a. Seemingly uh espousing a minority opinion. Um. And that's, that's okay. Um. Now, uh, I I would like to hear from our town council on, you know, what's our, what's our current situation? And I I would like to, you know, at least. Personally, um, learn more about uh what. You know, potentially smaller projects.
Well, the the practical limitations, just to sort of put it out there. I mean. Mateo had said it earlier, so we're gonna have a special time meeting late September, October sometime. So. We, even if we change the use table, which is easy, you know, you put in data centers, you say PPPP. Um, and it take a definition from, you know, we can take one of the ones that were offered here that are relatively mundane. Um. We have to vote to approve that instead of the select board. And then we have to have a public hearing for it. So. Talking to Donna and then incorporating it into our next meeting, which is September eighth is a high likelihood. We're not going to do it for town meeting because we won't be able to have a public hearing. So.
Well, um, yeah, I assume, you know, I guess that's a list will be, you know, a draft of this moratorium.
Say again?
Uh, 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 adding to our list of, uh, you know, hearing from Donna and uh. We can add a um, learning more about uh. The small facilities and and we can add to that. Uh, a draft to uh. Essentially submit, but are you proposing that we would need to set a a hearing date today?
I think, well, I mean, I went into it thinking about the timeframe, but not assuming that I would know where this conversation goes, but. My thought was. Part of. The approach was to keep it simple. You know, so like a use table, you you literally just add a use and you you say prohibited in all four zones. And we could look at, you know. Come up with a definition that we agreed to and then. Say this is going to be our proposed amendment, said to the select board. We could decide September eighth that we don't want to do it, but we still would have to have a public hearing. Before town meeting. So, you know, maybe it won't work. Maybe it's too tight. Um, it just seemed like. Once Haley told us we have a special time meeting, it seemed like, well. Better than waiting till May of next year or June or whenever we're going to do it. Um. So, you know, if we were in a special time meeting, we would just have a long process and we would keep. Researching and discussing and debating and we would, you know, do this stuff in February or March of next year.
Good night, I'm I'm sorry, I I. Okay, um, two things. One is I'd love to hear Keith, um, how you feel about this. The second thing is that. If this was all turned around. And I was the only one who was against it and everyone else was for it. We would probably have a vote. And see how we felt. Right? Because it is a planning board of six or seven, you know, members. So I would offer. The possibility, I want to hear from Keith and um. Um, about how you feel about it, Keith, about putting in a one year moratorium. And then I like the possibility of being able to vote and move forward with it. I mean, that's how I, that's how I feel. Again, if I was the only one against it and everyone else is for it, we'd probably go for a vote. And I've been in that situation before as well. Now, this isn't questioning, you know, the the rule of law, um, Nathan, this is just looking at. The planning board, the seven members and being able to vote on what some of us. Perhaps the majority feel is appropriate of having a one year moratorium. And and voting on it and then um and then proceeding on writing the bylaw. That's the way I feel. So.
Seems like, uh, you know, you might, you might have easily have four depth. But um, we we are, we were just talking about, you know, possibly setting a date for a special uh for a a hearing.
Um, yeah, well, that that I'd like to.
Well, yeah, you know, so you would like to hear from Keith.
Yeah, let's hear from Keith and I I'd like to possibly, this is a, for me, there's no downside to this. It's just basically um protecting us from a situation that could be um. Not in the best interest of the people that elected me. So Keith, I don't know how you feel about uh the possibility of putting up one year moratorium and then having discussions on the bylaw of a possible data center.
I'm uncomfortable. I I don't have a good handle on what a data center is. Again, it's back to the scale. Is it a a room with a couple of racks of computers? Is it? Or again, the Amazon warehouse scale. And the definitions that Michael, I mean, again, it's it's kind of loosey goosey. They don't really talk of, they just say data center. I could, I could interpret that in a lot of ways, you know, a lot of office buildings probably have data centers. And a utility closet somewhere. Um, so I think. I think as a. Board, we need to. Somehow get a get a grip on what we mean by data center. You're focused on the groundwater. And again, I think that's like, like Nathan says. I'm sure these big ones do have a a need for water cooling. Uh, but I do envision a bunch of smaller ones or or chilled with air conditioners, just like our houses are, um, like other equipment. Um. And don't have a lot of through through water uh. Demands, um. And I I don't, I I also, you know, don't feel the urgency because I I really. And maybe this is naive on my part. I again, shoots very does not seem like an attractive target for anybody. Hell, just from our landscape. Uh, building anything around here ain't, you know. Walk in the park, uh, let alone if it's a high water demand uh. Industry or again, back to electricity, they need, they need cheap electricity and Massachusetts ain't Western Mass ain't ain't really. The place for cheap electricity right now. Um. Again, I'm not a week, I I I'm I'm. Relatively indifferent. I I see Nathan's point. Uh, I get where you guys are coming from to be, you know. Protective of of any eventuality, but I I don't, I don't feel strongly either way right now. I I'll I'll tell you guys a little story about ten years ago. We didn't see the need at that time, maybe twelve years ago, for any kind of solar bylaw. Because we had the same kind of thinking. Who's going to bother coming here, clearing forests and putting up something? And that was naive on the planning boards, you know, in retrospect. That's a no brainer today, right? We got we. And so I would say. Buying a year. Putting the broadest definition of data center in in the you in the um definitions. And then figuring out what definition, what what we want to do with it. Uh, as Jeff said, there's no downside to it. We're not prohibiting anything except. Giving us the planning board a year to be thoughtful about what we want to do.
And and one thing I would, Keith, in terms of following up, which I didn't get to share, but when I've been thinking about it. I I think I put it in my email. I've been trying to think about principal use versus accessory use. You know, so part of my thinking would be. We don't want data sensors that, you know, for this this short period of time, there would be a principal use. But if, you know, if there was some. Home business that wanted, you know, needed to run their computers, or we actually had a business in town, if it's an accessory use. It feels different because it's a preexisting use on a lot, you know? Um, so that was what, that was one way I was getting around the whole size thing.
Yeah.
Um, for the intro. Because anything that's going to come down, you know, from out of town and plop here is going to be a principal use. Um, there's not a, there's not a preexisting use that they would fulfill.
Kind of tangential is crypto cryptocurrency. Bitcoin mining included in data center. Definition. By comparison, AI. Is way, way more energy intensive, uh, you know, it makes crypto uh mining look like a pinky wiggle. Well, and and that, but but crypto mining is not insignificant.
It's not, I didn't say it was insignificant.
Yeah, I mean, as far as our town goes, it's, I mean.
This, it's a whole different.
Right.
Yeah. Noise, no, I always heard about noise with uh, crypto mining. Look, um, do we, uh? I mean, you know, I'm not, uh. I'm not overly concerned about it, I I, you know, I think that we have the tools at our disposal to prevent any project that would be damaging to the residents of Shute's Berry, I do. But I uh, I'm not, you know, I mean, if we want, if the board is trying to move forward and we need to set a. A hearing today, then. We should uh, think about whether or not we absolutely need to. Or or not. Or whether we can, we can. We can meet. In a, in September. And possibly set a hearing for, uh, you know, I mean, obviously, if the the meeting is looking to be in October. Or late September.
Or late September.
Yeah, so if it's late September, we we can't pull it off if we wait. If it's October, then there's some flexibility.
I was thinking for the email that we got for the special town meeting, I must have archived it, but I think it set a deadline in there. It said, you know, if anyone else wants to add.
October first. Yeah, because it's. It's the Hampshire County Healthcare Trust is. Going up, yes, I'm. Yeah, so Mateo. As information.
So they're, they're looking at possibly September thirtieth. It had been the twenty third, but it moved it, so now, uh. Potentially September thirtieth.
For the meeting, Mateo, do you know the deadline for submitting articles?
Articles need to be fourteen days.
September second.
Articles need to be submitted by September second.
September second.
In between.
And I can also just add quickly in in response to something that Jeff brought up about the vote. That the planning board can't unilaterally. Uh, impose a moratorium or prohibition on a use, so it have, it would have to be in the form of an amendment passed through town meeting.
Yeah.
But, but there is, but there could be a decision, you know, based on a. If a permit came, you know, an application came for it, they, you know, you can impose whatever restriction you want on it. Um, but but imposing a restriction on use, the board can't do on its own.
I don't think anyone was suggesting that. But thank you for clarifying. Yeah, so I guess, you know, if it's a. September second, uh, it's a, it's a hustle, we we gotta send out the uh, notice. Like tomorrow. So, I mean, you know, if uh, if you wanna. If you want to make it happen. You know, somebody move. Just in terms of dates, so I I have.
We could talk about the dates first, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just in terms of the timeline, so. According to statute, the town meeting vote has to be either twenty one days after the hearing. Or after a reporter submitting to the planning board, so if it was on the thirtieth, we'd have to have the hearing. Like around September ninth, so the the beginning of September. Which, and then you have to have.
Wait, what, what did he say, Michael, about the hearing and town meeting?
So here, here's a sequence, so we we send the recommendation to the select board. The select board has fourteen days to return it back to us. Um, we have sixty five days to hold a hearing. After we receive, we receive the amendment, so we could do it in less than sixty five days, but we have up to sixty five days, so. We do shorter, the first notice in the paper has to be at least fourteen days before the hearing. So that's, so if we did say the hearing on September ninth. It would have to be two weeks prior to that, so. Um, probably next week, we'd have to be the first notice, the second notice would be the next week, and then. Town meeting vote has to be twenty one days ap-. Um, must be either twenty one days after the hearing. Or after a reporter submitted to the planning board on the amendment, so if if we didn't, if twenty one days was not met, as long as we sent. Town meeting our report, which we can actually do orally. Where are you reading this from? From our thing. You know, in terms of the, uh, I mean. I thought it was sort of elegant to do the use table and the definition because it seemed sort of. Simple, if we did like moratorium language, which I think. Is what the planning board did around the housing development, you know, the thing we just deleted. A, you know, town meetings last time. I think that was just more narrative. You know, so it sort of got inserted. That might be easier to sort of. Agree to tonight, you know, that.
I think the moratorium on, you know, development, Michael, was uh, much more involved because of its as of right nature, I think, I, it might be different for this, I mean, we got, that's a question for Donna.
Well, it was, I mean. It was put in place because the planning board, I mean, Steve would know this, but it was because the open space design was getting considered. And it was highly controversial and Cindy, as the large landlord, didn't want to lose the value of her land with. Open space design, so. That was, it had, it was not so much about. A and R rights, it was more about re- reconceptualizing how one could do development in town. And therefore, while that was getting developed and considered and. Education happening, the moratorium was there as far as I understand.
That's correct, that's essentially right.
But it was a. Uh, you know, I just remember Deacon saying it was involved to get it done because it wasn't, you know. You, we couldn't do it again. You know, it was like a, some kind of one time thing, it was, it was something like, I don't know a lot about it, but I think it's different when it's not. Residential, look, it's getting late. I think we're in a tight spot, I don't know if, uh.
Yeah, I don't know, this is a tight spot, I'm not seeing a clear path to, uh. To do this.
It, here's, here's an idea for proceeding. Um, I mean, we should have a vote. I think. I can articulate. Or vote what the change would be in the use table. Add a definition and then we we send that select board, and then if the planning board is. Okay with it, you know. You and Mateo or whomever can set a date for the hearings based upon that, we don't have to figure that out right now. And it could be September eighth, I think that's our next meeting. So. As far as I can tell, that would work. Yeah, so. That's an option, I mean, I, what I would propose is. Creating data centers as a new use and prohibiting it all for districts. And. I think in terms of. The definition. I think I would use the one that came from. Datacenters dot com, because it's, it's just sort of straightforward. A data center is a facility composed of network, computer, storage systems and computing resources. That organizations use to process, store and disseminate large amounts of data.
Got to throw out there, the school has one of those.
Our, Sichuan, aren't you?
Every school has one, yeah. They have a a place where all their servers are. Small, you know, but it's there, I, so I, I mean, can we say like, except for ones that already exist or? I'm sure it wouldn't be a problem, but I don't know, it's just something.
Standalone, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think standalone or, you know, principal use kind of thing.
Oh, we have a latitude if we do a a public hearing to to tweak it, I think it would be good to include. You know, more the moratorium language, right, but obviously we don't have all that right now, um, and. Also, this this thing of submit to the select board so they can submit back to us. I don't think that's really, uh, a necessary step for us.
It's always been unclear to me.
Well. So I I I read this on the Attorney General's frequently asked questions page, and they said, you know. Like generally speaking, the submit to the select board. Is done for the other. Other mechanisms by which a uh. A zoning by law comes to fruition, primarily like a citizen's petition or another board. Right, and then they submit it to the planning board, right, and so the the Attorney General is like, well, obviously the planning board oftentimes will develop. The legislation. So it doesn't make sense for them to submit it to the select board to, you know, but that page has been taken down and is no, it's not functional, there's a link to it, but it's not functional, so I can't. I remember talking to you, Michael, and trying to bring it up, and it's like, I'm like, where is it, and, you know, we're on the phone, it's like, oh, we gotta go, you know, and, but it's, uh. I don't know, I mean, I think if, you know, maybe we can try and get a a on the phone with Donna. Uh, you know, so we can have a a motion to, uh, you know, uh. Do a public hearing, um, and to, uh. You know, and for, you know, the the language will, uh, you know, the public hearing will be to decide whether or not, uh, the planning board will recommend the by law amendment that would introduce, uh, you know, a moratorium. That would uh, prohibit for one year, uh, data centers, um. And then maybe throw in that definition, um, you know, maybe throw in primary use. Right, does someone want to make that motion, and we can just see if we can throw it together? I mean, I'm trying to, you know, I I I, I don't know if we need to do this, honestly, I I don't think we have to. You know, make this kind of, uh, jumps, it's a real tight turnaround and. But it's, uh. And I was kind of, I think it's getting a little bit excited over something that's definitely not going to happen, like, I don't think anyone is gonna come, keep in mind, this is, this whole conversation is spurred by. Just a company asking us if we had a by law that's tactical to data centers, a company in Brooklyn, right, um. I don't think anyone's actually trying to build a data center here. Mateo.
And just to clarify, when they asked, they asked about. Any by laws relevant to solar, energy, storage and data centers, we're not unique to data centers.
But, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, well, I I I I agree with Michael, I think we should, um, I think we should vote on it and move forward.
We can have a vote. And we can leave a lot of it. You know, a lot of the specifics to be. After the public hearing.
Yeah.
But we just need to, and we can leave a lot of the specifics as far as like the date of the public hearing and all that, right, but, uh. Yeah, I don't know, I feel like, you know, uh. Does anyone have the motion?
I get all.
Motion, Michael?
I'll move that we approve. A one year moratorium. For data centers, um, used as a primary use, um, with the definition. To be data centers are facility composed of network. Computers, storage systems and computing resources that organizations use to process, store and disseminate large amounts of information. As a primary use, um, and then. A data center. Would be added as a use of the industrial section of the use table and prohibited in all four. Zones.
You want to add prime, uh, standalone or no?
Oh, I said primary use, which is, I think, but we could just standalone, I mean, there, it seems like they're sort of synonymous in some regards. But standalone is is fine to do that as.
Both primary use or standalone or and standalone, something like that.
Okay, and or standalone.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Could I just hear the whole thing again, Michael, please?
Oh.
Did you write it? I'm sorry.
No, I was just winging it, hoping that Mateo would watch the video, but, um, essentially, I'm, I would. Let the board. Um, introduces a one year moratorium. On data centers, um, a data center as defined. In the bylaws as a facility composed of network computers, storage systems and computing resources. That organizations use to process, store and disseminate. Large amounts of data that is used either for primary use or in a standalone capacity.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
I I do have a question, so are, so if we're voting on this right now. This is not. Doing what you suggested earlier, Michael, which was to just define it and say, no, 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 prohibited, 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 this is.
No, I think this, this motion, the way I'm thinking about it in my head is if we agree to this motion, it would basically then get. Um, played out either for the public hearing, but in the zoning where. You would have a defined use in the industrial section and the use table, so it would be that part, and then the definition I just read, we get stuck in the definition section. So this is sort of a bundled package, it says, do these two things.
Okay, thank you.
I want to move to amend. That, uh. Provided that the. Chair. Or, uh, their designate will validate with town council the. Sufficiency of uh, procedural steps necessary to. Um, bring this, uh. Proposed amendment to special town meeting, uh, including, uh, the scheduling of a public hearing.
Can you explain that in real language?
Well, they, you know, just, you know, given our conversation about, you know, the whole submit to the select board and then come back and, you know, this kind of like, okay, we have, we're not actually setting a date, we're going to hold a. Public hearing, we're not actually, you know, uh, we don't have. You know, the writing of the legal notice was obviously, that can be somewhat, uh, general, it doesn't have to be a specific draft or anything like that, but it's just, you know, making sure that every, all our, uh. We're not missing anything if we, if if we go and and say, all right, you know, um. Uh, you know, we would need to draft a legal notice. Get it sent out. Um, have a hearing and submit a report to, uh, town meeting, right? Including, we also have, obviously have to submit the warrant article to the select board.
Why don't, why don't we just say that it's part of the motion that we empower the chair to make sure procedural. Elements are. Completed to satisfaction or something like that.
That's more or less what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Sufficiency, alright. Alright, so I'll move to amend that, you know, the. The chair is empowered to see that the, uh, necessary procedural steps. Are, uh. Sufficient to achieve, uh, this motion. Or this objective. Okay, and so you've got that, uh.
Yeah, I wrote it down, I can send, I'm I'm assuming Mateo's got it too, but. I can.
We need a, a, we need a second on my motion to amend.
Second, well.
Mateo, Roberts rules of order, do we need to vote on the, uh, motion to amend as well, or can we vote on the whole thing all at once?
Unfortunately, you have to vote on the amendment.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? I'll call the roll. Pikecraft?
Hi.
Ressler?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Hasty?
Hi.
Take care. And I'm an eye. So we'll, uh, that. Motion to amend, uh, carries, and now we'll, uh, any discussion on the, uh, motion as amended?
I just want to appreciate the conversation, I didn't want it to, I was hoping it wouldn't be a big controversial thing, and I appreciate everyone's perspective, it's. It's. You know. I don't think we like being in these places where we're rushing. The whole idea was not to rush, so I I.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm not, uh. Yeah, it's 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 rough to be rushing, um, yeah, but it is what it is, I, uh. So we'll do, uh, anyone else? Okay, we'll do the, we'll call the roll, uh, Pikecraft?
Hi.
Ressler?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Hasty?
Hi.
Take care. And I'm an eye. Okay, um. Okay, um.
Nathan, I appreciate your flexibility um and willing to just have this discussion. And also, I just wanna appreciate um us on the planning board. I think um the power and strength of this planning board are a group of adults who who um care deeply about the town and who are sensitive to the feelings of others and who are trying the best they can to make the best decision possible for the people that voted for us. So I think, though, even though there was disagreement, um I think we were very successful in this discussion. And I hope that in the future, we can have discussions like this where we don't all agree with each other, which is completely fine, which I would say is part of the planning board. We're not supposed to necessarily agree with each other, but we're supposed to have civil conversations um and try to represent the people who elected us the best we can, and that's exactly what happened today. So I don't want anyone to have, and my feeling is, I don't want anyone to have any bad feelings about today. Today was, in my view, perfect. Because we've got to express what we felt and, and we voted and, and we proceeded the best we could. So anyway, I I I need to say that, and thank you, Nathan, for your flexibility and your willingness to uh have this discussion. That's all.
Of course, Jeff, thank you for the kind words, and I would, I hope I didn't give the impression that there's uh anything I can do to stop this sort of thing.
No, this is exactly what we should be doing. This is democratic uh planning board behavior and um results. That's the way I feel. So thank you, Nathan, for uh leading us um in this discussion.
I guess I can go ahead and add another little bullet to my uh communique that there's a, we can look forward to a public hearing. One more bullet point. I guess I better get that out pretty quick.
So the public hearing will happen before our next meeting, maybe, or not, around the ninth?
I think I would suggest we do it on our next meeting, which is the eighth.
Oh, yeah, that would be the best. Do it at the same time.
Yeah, the only um the only wrinkle in that whole thing is uh if there's a September second deadline for a warrant or article, um we may have to go with the uh the vague language. As opposed to our typical approach, which is the final language after we've had our public hearing and and reviewed it, which is okay, but this is why, you know. You know, I have the
You know, the fact that they're not sending out hard copies anymore makes that deadline mushy. I mean, they're messing with stuff much, you know, if it's the thirtieth, that's twenty eight days before town meeting. Um they have plenty of time to mess with things.
And it did say uh if you need additional time, let us know.
Yeah, I think just give, we should just give them a heads up and let them know basically what we're doing.
That's huge. I forgot that, that it said if you need additional time, let us know. That's great.
The uh, we can do, folks. Um, I wonder if I'm even gonna be uh yeah, we'll see. So if I've, special town meetings are sometimes uh I've missed some of those. They can be on different days. All right, we have uh member updates, and uh does anyone have anything they would like to share as a member update? Yeah, unfortunately, I have to leave. I I didn't realize it was gonna go on this, you know, our meeting was gonna go on this long, but um I apologize. Yeah, I I apologize, but thank you all, and uh I'm sure I'll see you soon.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Okay, I've got uh, does anyone uh also have an update? Does anyone else just gonna uh we're on the, basically, the item before adjourning, you know, there's no unanticipated business that I've been made aware of yet, so Yeah, all right, so I've got one, right? And uh this is, this pertains to our situation with the our our, our eighty, our bylaw amendments and uh our failure to properly notice FERCOG and the uh uh executive department of uh community uh housing and livable communities. And I don't, on a, a sideline, I think probably just Mateo, with Mateo, Michael, and Michael and I, there's been a conversation about whether or not this should be uh, uh this should be a bylaw amendment referencing the the handbook. We're not gonna get into the merits of whether or not that should be had right now, but I am going to provide the update that I did appear before the personnel board when they met earlier this week and provide a public comment to give a high-level overview of our situation, and that, you know, the board is uh interested in um improving our processes. Now, my suggestion is that the personnel board is actually a really good way to to go about doing this. Given that the Land Use Clerk is an employee of the town, and that not only do they uh support the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, but also the Conservation Commission, right? So uh memorializing these kind of things, any kind of process, uh documentation, that kind of thing. You know, the uh, the personnel board may be a good avenue for trying to tighten up those processes, uh if anything. I see Michael kinda nodding his head a little bit, and that
Yeah.
Um, so it's uh they've got some stuff on their plate. Right now, they're trying to do a uh employee handbook? Right, and so, you know, they got some high-level stuff they're looking to uh polish up. I think that, you know, they're trying to catch up a little bit, you know, I think there's been, there's some stuff out there that's outdated. But uh once they get through some of the current stuff they're looking at, uh you know, I think that's when we'll kind of go back and just uh you know, we can, you know, we can just kind of provide our feedback if they end up taking up that process, you know, so we can kind of keep an eye on that. Obviously, now, you know, Mateo knows about it, and I think he's probably gonna put some, some uh dividers in the, in the binder, and, you know, maybe uh neat it up a little bit, but that's uh, that's all I've got. Now, I wanna ask Mateo if uh I know that there was, do you have any update on on actual bylaw amendment for the, from town meeting? Last we heard, there was a a request for extension to the Attorney General's office.
Yeah, so uh the last that I heard from Grace was that she had submitted a request for an extension. She was out for a while for medical reasons. Um, and so my understanding is that we hear back from the NGO in uh in September, early September. And that's for all of the No, no, on the, on the review of the bylaws and the bylaw amendments.
Okay, so
Manual town meeting.
Okay. Okay, that's, so, you know, things are in motion, and we should hear back. Okay, good. Uh no unanticipated business. Um go hear a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Uh second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, once again, sorry, once again, uh Nathan, thank you for your um leadership, uh your flexibility, and um and to the rest of the uh planning board members here, thank you for it's uh it's incredible for me to be on a, you know, with a group of adults who can speak uh passionately about things they believe in and for everyone to be heard and for us to come to a resolution um the best we can. So thank you, Nathan, thank you, Michael, and um it's a great planning board. I appreciate it.
Okay, anything else?
I'll just, I'll just riff on that for a second. I think lots of boards and lots of towns don't have these kind of conversations. It's sort of like that, you know, it just stuff just goes by, you know, so I think the fact that we're trying to actually figure out the right thing. It's not easy in this changing world, that's for damn sure. So I appreciate everybody too.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, uh thanks to everybody for uh sticking in here, for uh hanging in there for to nine thirty. I do not like going past nine o'clock on these meetings, but it was a uh we're in a tight spot, you know, we had to hash it out a little bit, so I I appreciate everyone. Okay, uh and thank you for uh Jeff and Michael for the kind words and
Did we vote? We didn't vote yet.
Yep, let's uh
We didn't vote yet.
Yeah, that's true. So, but let's feel good about uh our process. I mean, it's a good thing. That's what we're supposed to do, and that's what we did. Thank you.
Now uh I'll call the roll. Pikecraft?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Hasty?
Hi.
Take care.
Bye.
And I'm an eye. The eyes have it unanimously. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.